We're at this point in time calling the meeting to order. First, I would do the roll call. Crystal Barnett, trustee. Matthew Lucchetti, trustee.
Here.
Jeffrey Myers, trustee.
Here.
Keisha Rivers, trustee. Heather Rowland, trustee.
Here.
Bob Scheid, trustee.
Here.
Kat Tedesco, trustee.
Yeah.
Okay, now I would administer the oath of office. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. If everyone please rise and pledge allegiance, my apologies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. My apologies. So now I'd like to administer the oath of office to the superintendent of schools. You raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kenneth Graham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the superintendent.
Of the superintendent.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Thanks, thank you.
Okay, now I will administer the oath to the newly re-elected trustees, Matthew Lucchetti and Bob Scheid. I don't know if you want to do it together or separately? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Bob Scheid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of board trustee.
Board trustee.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, there will be a call for nominations for one of the members of the board to serve as president of the Board of Education for the ensuing year. I now call for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Matt Lucchetti.
Okay. If there are no further nominations, may I have a motion to close the nominations?
Motion.
Motion to close? I think it's Bob.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries and nominations are closed. There is a nomination for Matthew Lucchetti to serve as president during the ensuing official school year. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Aye, Matthew Lucchetti.
Aye, Matthew Lucchetti.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of president of the Board of Education.
Of pres- sorry. I got it. Of president of Board of Education of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
We usually turn it over to the president, so I'll turn the meeting now over to the president.
So, thank you, everyone, I really appreciate it, and thank you to my board for entrusting me into this position. So now we have the nomination of Board Vice President and Oath of Office. So I'm calling for a nomination. Just help me through this one, because I haven't done it, to open it, right?
Sure.
So any nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education?
I nominate Heather Rowland.
So we have Kat nominating Heather Rowland. Any other nominations? At this point, if there's no other nominations, may I have a motion to close the nominations?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Scheid? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Right, motion carries. Nominations are closed. Oh, need a second? Okay, second, can I have a second, please? Mr. Myers, thank you. So all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. So there is a nomination for Heather Rowland to serve as our Vice President during the ensuing official school year. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Heather Rowland. You have been duly elected to the office of Vice President of the Board of Education. And the district attorney will now administer the oath of office.
Aye, Heather Rowland.
Aye, Heather Rowland.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Heather.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move on to the appointment of our school officials. So the first one would be the appointment of the district clerk and administration oath of office. So recommend the Board of Education appoint Erin Aristi as our district clerk of the Board of Education for 2024-2025 school year. I need a motion. Motion, is that Mr. Scheid? Second? Second, Mr. Tedesco, all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Erin. If you please step up for your oath of office.
Aye, Erin Aristi.
Aye, Erin Aristi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of district clerk.
Of district clerk.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According of the, according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now we have appointment of the deputy district clerk of the Board of Education. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Frank Baki as deputy district clerk of the Board of Education for the 24-25 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tedesco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Frank, come on up for your oath of office. All right, congratulations.
Aye, Frank Baki.
Aye, Frank Baki.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of deputy district clerk.
Of deputy district clerk.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Congratulations, Frank. Now we have appointment of the district treasurer. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Tiana Belacastro as district treasurer for the 2024-2025 school year, and further that she is bonded in the amount of $1 million. The Board President advises that the district treasurer should be authorized as the sole signatory on all checks issued by the North Babylon School District. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second. Mr. Scheid? All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Come on up. Congratulations.
Aye, Tiana Belacastro.
Aye, Tiana Belacastro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of district treasurer.
Of district treasurer.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
Of the North Babylon Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're up to the appointment of the deputy treasurer. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Christine Mahone as deputy treasurer for the 2024-2025 school year. Have a motion? Motion, Mr. Myers, second? Second, Ms. Tedesco, all in favor? Aye. Any abstention? Motion carries. No, someone in on that one, right? Yep, okay, cool. So now we're up to appointment of the district, school district attorney, general counsel. So let's recommend the Board of Education appoint Garcia Ngersio, general counsel for the school district for 2024-2025 school year at an annual retainer of $66,500 plus $2.70 an hour for all attorney fees, $1.60 an hour for law clerks, and $1.35 an hour for paralegal services. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers, all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Appointment of the claims auditor. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Michael T. Kearns to the position of claims auditor for the 2024-2025 school year at annual cost of $17,904. That'll be a motion? Motion, Mr. Scheid, second? Second, Mr. Myers, all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. External auditors. Recommend the Board of Education appoint Naraki Smith, LLP, as district's external auditors for the 2024-2025 school year. Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second? Second, Mr. Scheid? Guys are all got me going back and forth. All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now we have internal auditors. So we recommend the Board of Education appoint Colin Endonowski, LLP, as the district's internal auditors for the 2024-25 school year. Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Myers, second? Second, Ms. Tedesco, all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Omnibus, we're going F through. Anybody get there first? 23?
43.
43. Ooh, 1 through 43. All right. 42, 43, so had a chance to look over those, I know this was out earlier, so we need a motion? Motion, Ms. Rowland, second? Mr. Myers? All in favor? Aye. Motions carry. So that is the agenda for our Board of Educational Reorganizational Meeting, July 1st, 2024. We are now going to go into our Board of Education Regular Business Meeting, July 1st, 2024. Congratulations to all, everyone who is appointed. Again, thank you for my appointment as president. And I also wanted to welcome Ms. Laurie to her first board meeting tonight, so thank you so much. All right, so we're going to be, I need a motion for the approval of minutes of Board of Education minute for minutes meeting for June 13th. See the motion? Motion, Mr. Scheid, second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Rowland, all in favor? Aye. Any abstention? The motion carries. We have correspondence received, so the Board of Education received correspondence via the district clerk from June 14th to 2024 to June 30th, 2024. If you do not see your name there and you sent something in, please reach out to Ms. Aristi and make sure that we do see it. This is a time where we're going to move into our superintendent's report, so I'm going to welcome Dr. Graham for the beginning of first meeting of the July, I mean, 2024-25 school year, so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lucchetti. 24-25, here we come, right? Just cleaning up some old business from the 23-24 school year. We had some amazing celebrations at the end of the school year. We had our elementary moving ups, our middle school eighth grade moving up, and high school graduation, both were amazing ceremonies. And those are viewable on our YouTube channel, so if you're interested, you should all go check those out and see all of the celebrations and the happiness on our students' faces. Today, Ms. Butler organized a nice picnic for all of our new teachers who we've hired for the opening of school, and we're really, you know, looking to touch base with them throughout the course of the summertime and keep them engaged in learning about all of the great things here in North Babylon. And we had a really nice gathering today, it was great to celebrate with those new individuals. And lastly, for my report this evening, is we are switching over our website to a new provider, it's called Parent Square. And Parent Square will also be the new communication mode that we have. All of you are probably used to Thrill Share, which is what we currently use. It's the way that we communicate with parents, families, and staff in terms of emergencies, school closings, or important information, so that'll all be changing over throughout the course of this summer. So you should just keep an eye out for messages from us. We're hoping to make that change over to the new website within the next week. And hopefully, it'll be a little bit more user-friendly for everyone. And Parent Square is used in about 50% of the districts throughout the state at this point, certainly similarly on Long Island. So if you work in another school district, you may have a baseline of familiarity with Parent Square already. Once we send that information out, I strongly encourage everyone to download the app. It's something that's going to be really nice one-stop shopping for parents and families. And that concludes my report for this evening, Mr. Lucchetti, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Graham, and yeah, I would absolutely love to just say the ceremonies at the end of the year were absolutely amazing, from all the presentations, the speeches, and all of the students that came out to celebrate the events, it was excellent, so. We're going to move on, this is our parent, I mean, public participation, so we're going to, this section gives the Board of Education opportunity to recognize students who wish to raise a question or to make a brief statement on agenda items, and this time it's agenda items only. Time available will be limited to five minutes for any question or comment, and we ask that you come up to the podium with students? Yeah, in the summertime.
They have homework tonight.
Can you tell me what abolition and creation of administrative positions you're doing? And actually, I have a few agendas I worked on online. I thought that traditionally, the superintendent was always evaluating each unit and then just raised the set point at that point for the following year. But I noticed that Dr. Graham's contract is being extended, and it has a salary now. It has a salary now for every year, and that's something new, and in many years, I've never seen that. I was wondering how come that was done? And then I also see that CEO, employees not covered by a union got raises, and I was just wondering, and well worth it, but how was that calculated? Is this a straight percent or arbitrary numbers? I was just kind of wondering. What?
The last question was about basically salaries and how it's determined.
Could you repeat the last question?
The last question, I saw that employees not represented by a union got raises, and I was wondering how that was calculated? If it was a straight percent or if it's just arbitrary raises for each individual person? I mean, it was posted, so it's on the agenda.
Well, I could certainly answer the first question, Evelyn, with respect to the creation and abolition of the positions. So that was item 5B, right? Within the resolution, it says what the position that's being abolished is. It does.
Not on mine, not on the website.
Maybe not on the phone, but within the, yeah, within the resolution, it delineates, remember, we presented this at an earlier meeting during the context of budget, where we changed some of the titles and we made the directors K-12 to coordinator positions. So within the agenda on the one that, you should be able to, it's public content.
I know, that's where I go. I go to the website, and I just took this picture so I wouldn't forget. It wasn't listed in the agenda online. In the agenda online, it's not listed. There's no attachment to that.
It's not an attachment, it's actually within the resolution, right on board docs.
The resolution is in written on the agenda.
Perhaps it's not viewable on the mobile version. I don't know, it's, so I'm looking at, I'm not logged in, I'm looking at the public edition, and it's the director positions and the assistant director for special education. Those are positions that are abolished, and those are being, then the new positions, the coordinator positions are being created. So actually, within the resolution also, it lists the individual who's currently sitting in that position and the individual that will sit in that new position as well.
Okay, I thought you had already done that, so I thought it was something in addition.
We established those positions, but we didn't formally abolish and create the positions.
Gotcha.
And then as far as, obviously, the agreement with Ken, that is something that has been discussed with the Board of Education and a procedure. We addressed it with council, and just something this board felt it was something we wanted to do for an extended period of time to stop having those conversations on an annual basis.
Okay, no, I just kind of wondered, and welcome, because you'll be here long after I'm gone.
Yes, and the personal evaluation is completed and done and presented as well, so, just to let you know.
And just so you know, I'm going to say this later, and I'm going to say this again now. Congratulations, Matt and Heather. Congratulations, Matt and Bob. Welcome, Laurie, and of course, Frank. Congratulations on your tenure.
Thank you, Evelyn.
I won't be making that mistake again.
Anyone else with any questions? Okay, so we'll move on to the agenda. Personal agenda item, personal actions, personnel actions. The superintendent of school recommends the board approve the Personnel Actions Report in Schedule A, B, and C dated July 1st. I need a motion? Motion, Ms. Rowland, second? Second, Ms. Tedesco, all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have abolition and creation of administrative positions. Recommend the board approve the following resolution effective July 1st regarding the creation of new titles for NBAA members. So we need a motion? Motion, Mr. Myers, second? Ms. Rowland, all in favor? Something wrong? Is it that? Thank you. Okay, so now we're up to approval of superintendent's contract. So resolve the Board of Educ- Resolv- the Board of Education hereby approves the contract agreement with Kenneth E. Graham, Superintendent of Schools, effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2029, subject to the terms, conditions, rights, and responsibilities as more fully set forth in written agreement between the parties, and hereby authorizes the Board President to execute said agreement on behalf of the board. Need a motion? Motion, Mr. Myers, second? Second, Mr. Scheid, all in favor? Aye? Any abstention? Motion carries, so congratulations, Superintendent, and welcome. All right, so omnibus motion is recommend the board approve the following omnibus motion, items, letters B through R. So I need a motion? Motion, Mr. Myers, second? Ms. Tedesco? Good? Yes? All in favor? Aye? Any abstention? Motion carries. I have one action item, which is a settlement of agreement resolved upon recommendation of superintendent schools. The Board of Education hereby approves a stipulation of settlement between the North Babylon Union Free School District and the employee named in confidential exhibit A, and hereby authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute the agreement on behalf of the board. I need a motion? Motion, Ms. Rowland, second? Mr. Scheid? Good? All in favor? Aye? Any abstention? That motion carries. So now we're into public participation. According to Board Policy 1510, this section of the agenda gives the Board of Education opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question or to make a brief statement on matters including, but not limited to, agenda items. The time available will also be five minutes, and we ask everyone to please come up to the podium, state their name. No questions, Dan? You're good? You have a question, sir? Yeah?
Does this include a budget comment as well? Being in the district for, since 2013, I mean, ultimately, I haven't really had any participation one way or another in the budget vote, but of late, I've determined and did some statistical digging and analysis, and it seems to be that less than 7% of the population of North Babylon actually votes in a school budget. Doesn't that concern the board? That type of apathy, if that were to extend to members of the political parties, they would be up in arms, they would be knocking on doors, trying to raise awareness and saying, this is what's going on. This is your tax dollars. And to celebrate, and I guess I'm not looking for a single comment at that point, at this point, but to send out a newsletter and to look into say that we've remained within the 2% cap, and I guess that was 2.89? I'm just questioning this, I'd be turning 73 this year, so quite obviously, my ability to earn an income has been severely diminished. But unfortunately, I've had to gone to go back to work part-time because of all the inflation of the cost of living increases, I should say a meager cost of living from Social Security and all the other methodologies that our government seeks to increase our tax levy. And I'm wondering, being in business, I worked for Pepsi-Cola for almost 25 years, and although that was a stockholdered company, and there were many franchises, in times of lean business, I remember sitting around for a lot of board meetings, I was the director of risk management, listening to the president saying, we've gotten tight, we've got to tighten our belts. Our sales projections are low, our income is low, our costs of contracts are high, yet the board doesn't see that, and every year, they pat themselves on the back as to what the increase is. Oh, we've got to dream up, I read in all these programs that you're coming out with, art, music, flag football. When does the board consider and say, you know what? Inflation alone is eating away at our residents' dollars in income. When does the board say, you know what? Let's tighten it up and say, this year, we're going to just expand on the absolute necessities of what the board recommends or what the school is, rather than go out and looking for things to do? As a senior, you know, we get the star, unfortunately, I had the star revoked, I guess the enhanced star, because of the income that I had because I worked three jobs in the last couple of years. So it really comes down to the fact that why does the board not ever seek to just maintain the status quo? Why is it to reach for other things and pat themselves on the back, as I said, with a 2.89 increase? Where do you feel that you earned the trust of the taxpayers to try and minimize expenses in a year where inflation and the cost of living is eating away at our dollars? Just a general comment.
Yes, I'll say thank you for your comment, we don't go back and forth. We let you come to the mic and state your case. I will tell you that we have a very long process, and we encourage you to maybe be part of that next year in coming to the meetings and seeing the presentations and through the dialogues of the board, and why we come to the numbers that we do come to. So I do encourage you to come to more meetings, as you can tell. Similar to your situation with the voting, it's very similar at meeting times sometimes, where not too many people come, but understand for sure, everyone standing up here and many other people encourage many people to sit in those seats, and we do various things to try and encourage more people to come. We encourage you to come, as you said, you haven't participated much, and maybe you can get a better understanding of how the process works throughout the full year. If you come and join us a little bit more, and we'd be happy to have you listen to that dialogue If you come and join us a little bit more, and we'd be happy to have you listen to that dialogue, um, from the, from the board when we go through the actions. It's a long process. We don't make a decision overnight. We start the process in December, uh, and it goes all the way through, uh, with multiple presentations in very different areas of the district. Um, so I, I just say I appreciate your statement, um, and you're welcome here anytime.
And I understand that, and within the realm of possibility, one thing that you overlooked, as I said, why is it that the board never seeks to tighten the belt and say, "We just need to give the taxpayers..."
Again, I thank you for your, your comments.
I, I don't know. It, it seems that you, you kind of glazed over that, as, as to really just give me a general...
We're not going to answer that at this point in time in that statement, when we go through a long process throughout the year, uh, where we discuss things like this, and we encourage you to come, um, along the process this year.
Well, well, has, has, has the, uh, has the subject of apathy come up, ever come up? When you figure out how many people work for the...
Again, that's what I'm saying, it's not about going back and forth, I'm just telling you the process. And again, you can come and meet with anyone, uh, at any time, come to any board meeting you'd like, uh, and, and, and join in, in the process.
It's unfortunate that I did come down and, and found this to be kind of a waste, but thanks anyway.
Sorry you feel that way. You as well. Anyone else?
Really? Congratulations, Frank.
Sheesh. Okay, so you didn't answer my question before. Um, the people who are not in a, in a union, how did, how did their, how were their raises calculated? Is it an arbitrary number everybody gets, or does everybody get a percent? I'm just trying to understand how things are done. It's my new thing, I want to understand how things are done.
Okay.
Okay, wait, I have other things, wait, because I don't want to eat away my five minutes. Um, I see that there's a posting for, um, an AP at Moses, and I was wondering if we added a position? Because I know the person who was there is now at the high school, but nobody left the high school. So did we add a position?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't remember every year in that at the budget, because they do come to all the budget things.
It was part of it, yes.
Was it really?
Mm-hmm.
I must have missed that one. Um, bus drivers? What? Well, that was hurtful. Um, bus drivers? Did that in, out? Um, and I have to ask you this again. I'm, congratulations to the people who gradu- who graduated 50 years ago. There is so much good in this community, and I am, and I, it's not just me, people are sick of seeing that sign. Welcome to North Babylon, the 50th anniversary. There is so much good here, and that sign should be utilized for good. And again, gratitude changes everything. Um, did we lose the key? Because that could say the 50th anniversary. I just think those signs are like the pillar of the community, and they should have great things that are going on here on those signs. Do we agree?
We agree.
Let's, please.
Loud and clear. So, um, as far as, um, again, I'm, I'm going to make this statement tonight, um, and I hope you don't take it the wrong way, but the bus driver question, like, we don't ask about every department. So we have to stop asking about the bus drivers. If there's ever a concern again, we'll make sure that you guys are aware, but there hasn't been a concern, uh, for some time on that area. And it seems like we keep asking about that unit, and it's not fair to that unit, and it's not fair to the other units to keep bringing up their current situation.
Have we hired Paris? No, there, there, there's a lot of different things. My concern with the bus drivers is that I would hate to have to see more runs outsourced. And so that's, I, I understood that their contract, when it was settled, part of their, their pay schedule was to entice people to come here. I was wondering if it's working.
So again, I, I will add to that too, and as you know, and our answers almost every time we ask, w- we are all concerned, and we did have contract negotiations to hopefully bring more people here, and it has worked, um, uh, and, and we hope it continues to work. And like Frank said multiple times, it's not always with just the amount of people that we have, why we have to outsource certain runs. Those outsources of certain runs may happen regardless of the staff we have in, in here as well. So there's multiple areas there. Um, and you're always welcome to know those things, right? At the end of the day, you can reach out to Frank at any time he's willing and open to talk about those things with you. Just make sure you continue to congratulate him.
Okay. Every single time.
You got the AP one? Which was actually taken off tonight, right?
Not for everybody, though.
Right. Um, so determination, um, there's, uh, annual review, there's a discussion, uh, and, and then there's, you know, decision made, recommendations.
Yeah, I, yeah. Somebody keeps asking me, and so we've been talking about it, so we're trying to figure out how things are determined.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Appreciate you. Anyone else? All right. So, uh, seeing no one else coming to the microphone, I would like to say I wish everyone a wonderful and happy summer. Um, this was a nice start to the new school year, uh, and we look forward to many, many more meetings. Enjoy your time, rest and recuperate, and we'll see you here in a couple of weeks, right? August, August 1st? Yeah, I think it's August 1st. Uh, so I need a motion to adjourn? Motion, Mr. Scheid, second. All in favor?